Okay, six thirty-two, I'm following this meeting with Dr. Assistant Councilor. Uh, this meeting is on Zoom. If anybody's on Zoom and would like to make a comment or whatever, please uh, email or message the city secretary and she'll get that to us. Uh, at this time, we do have a forum present. So at this time, we're going to ask everybody, please write for the. And um, I can stand in for Captain Harry Darnell to bring the location.
Must join me, uh, we're gonna do the Lord's prayers. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. The kingdom come, will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us this today, we forgive and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and glory to the King.
Everybody survived the heatwave in the before. All right, starting with section nine with number one. Review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statements within twenty twenty-three.
Most things um are fairly routine, however, if you get to the very last page and you see a big overage down there, uh, and begin to be concerned as I did, that is because of some transfers that have been made, cleaning up some stuff uh that auditors wanted done and moving things around into different accounts that the finance director is doing, so I don't know. We are not in the hole, uh, we just have to, we're cleaning up a few things, a little housekeeping, and that's why that comes that way. Uh, there was no real significant things that uh came out this month um. We're, like I said, there's a few of the transfers in and out that they're going around that are skewing things a bit, but we are still moving along just fine.
Does anybody have any questions?
No. Bye. Do we have any updates on the tax revenue with the uh?
No. Uh, the certificates are due out next week. We do have a preliminary, um, there's the, it's hard to tell really what they are because the protests are so high, uh, and they haven't got through those yet, so the number, the protest numbers are still pretty high, but that's what we're working off of now, those will change next week when we get certificates.
Okay, moving on to number two, discussion on the recommendation from the.
Hey, the bond committee met in a couple of different sessions. We toured with them, the police department and this building. Um, of course, it is, well, you may or may not know that bond committee had one council member who was more of a advisory information provider, um. Then we had Johnny Rogers, Dustin Ds, Lindsey Elliott, Brent Gibson, and Lyndon Childers, all who toured the facilities, and uh, we asked them to take a look at um a need, the needs assessment, to walk through the facilities, uh, to evaluate some street and drainage concerns, and then establish a list of recommended projects with the city council. We gave them um several different areas to consider uh in both new construction, remodeling, and then several street options. Uh, and after quite a bit of discussion, they, they recommended or write a recommendation for two propositions on the ballot. Proposition one, what they believe the first priority would be the issuance of bonds for the construction of the new police department uh and administration facility, the shared complex um, which is what we've been working on for a bit. Um, proposition, they ruled out putting on a ballot an option to remodel existing buildings because they felt like it would create confusion or make it look like there were gonna remodel and build new, that they just thought that there'd be too much confusion having both on on the ballot, and they believed that um based on the uh feasibility study that we had done on the facility, that the cost to remodel would far outweigh if in in out cost the cost to build new. So that was the first proposition. The second proposition was the issuance of a street bond for street and drainage improvements uh for ten million dollars uh and provided a list of streets plus three alternates. Uh, would be downtown Main Street, McMillan, Bentley, Cobb, Baldwin, County Road nine oh four, which is Indian Hills, Stadium Drive, and then some additional drainage improvements on North Main Street. Um, they also decided to not make a recommendation on the animal control facility. It's just a timeline with text dot and how that will all play out is really unknown. They didn't see the need to um, to to put that on this ballot. It felt like there was in, that there was any hurry to do that. Um, and then we already discussed the remodeling option and why they chose not to do that, so uh, go through the two recommendations um based on the information that was provided and uh that's what they asked that I convey to the council.
Uh, Shelly, any questions?
Uh, not specifically about that proposition, but do we have, if we were to, if we were to present something like this, anticipate the problem, the anticipated question would be around the last request for money for street improvements. Do we feel like we're in a position on where those funds are gonna spend on the last time that we. We completed those.
We have completed, well, we've completed two of those, the third one, which was a part of North Main Street. Um, we were waiting on the water line, which has now come through, so we're, I expect that we do have bids on that, but they are more than a year old now. I expect that we will rebid that project. Um, just to make sure costs have come down a little bit in some of that construction, but not a whole lot. Um, so uh Santa Fe is complete and Fourth Street is complete. They're doing a final walkthrough on the last item that they were making some additional repairs, which is some riprap along the side of the road, not really the road surface. Um, but it's complete, we just haven't signed off on it yet. So there's still money there to for to do to put on North Main Street. Uh, and we'll, we'll start that bidding process probably probably beginning of the fall to kind of get it ready for a springtime bid opening, could be my guess. The others would be if if it went to the voters and if it were selected, we would, I don't think we would issue all of the bonds at once. I think we would do them because we we couldn't do all of these streets at the same time. Uh, we'd have to have multiple contractors, so I think we'd probably take a street or two or a section of town, do that side. We could, we don't have to issue the bonds as soon as voted on. We can do that over a period of a year or two. And the plan would be to issue those as we retire debt, so that we don't have to make any significant increases to the tax rules. That's kind of been the council's direction. We wanted to look at ways to do this and not put a tax burden on the, on the city, you know, for these things, so we would, we would do these as debt was retired.
Asked, this is what we advertised and this is what we did. Isn't certainly something that I could see being a concern or we gave them money and you didn't fix any of the streets.
Yeah, the last one was three, I think three point two million or something like that for streets, and that was Main, Santa Fe, and Fourth and Main Street. Part of this actually was included in on Main Street so that while we were doing the one part of it, we could continue going with the rest of it to kind of, to kind of tie onto it so we get more of it done. But that was, that was kind of the thought behind it. And these roads also, too, were chosen based off of our uh, street condition rating of streets that are in, in most needed repair, so that's where these, that's where the streets came from. They were off our condition rating.
Thank you.
What? Um, it's the scenes all aligned, really well, they did that what we needed. Get some more eyes in and see what we actually needed to get done. The reason why I don't know what we're trying to do.
They were um quite taken aback by the police department.
I'm sure. You know, the true condition.
Yeah, um. Yeah, it was a there was, there was eye openings for sure.
That's amazing, November ballot.
It will be, yes, if y'all choose to do it, yes. That's correct. I might visit with um Cory this week and actually had, had a meeting scheduled with he and Toby Cox for yesterday. Uh, Toby came down ill, and so we're gonna reschedule that, but my understanding is this, the, the school board has not made that decision yet. Um, but he does believe that that's what's gonna happen. It will be for a smaller amount. Um, but all, all that I was told was is that it would likely include a school, but he didn't, they didn't offer any, based on the amount, and I've not heard where the school would be or what type, or I don't really know anything about it.
For us to get in on the November ballot.
Correct.
I know that the people who uh work with you on this, uh, I've talked with one for sure and maybe a couple of others, but they were really eye-opening as to the needs of what the police department need. And uh, the comments were, gee, I didn't know this when I was voting last time. So uh, I think a lot of the problem we had last time was failure to get the information out, and we've already talked about how we approach that a little bit here.
Right. If y'all move forward, then we would begin to work with um some folks to put together some flyers, would do some mailouts and do some things to get, get factual information out. We've been offered to set up some town hall meetings here. We'd set one up at the police department. We could actually come and look at um, at the condition of the buildings and and get an understanding of why it's, it would be better to build new versus try to remodel what's there.
Specifically what the plan is, because I thought we were going to be doing one of the things the last. I wanted to know.
Well, we did do some of that. We, we did some uh, we had some flyers that had, or not flyers, but our um quarterly uh hand mailouts had them. Um, but we, we did not make near the effort that um there was, there was, there wasn't a whole lot of questions coming in about it. There was no organized opposition, so I think it just kind of, and I think the, I think the wording was a little confusing too. That, that's some of what was told to me. They were a little confused about what it was they were, they were voting on, so those are all things that we would work on, and we can bring some examples of that by certain, for the organization.
Can you do a video of the police department showing people what that thing really looked like?
We can, um, I've I probably want to look over again at all the rules, and there's some very strict guidelines of what we can and can't do. Um, so that'd be something we could, it's something we can do. Uh, whether or not it's allowed for us to do, I'll, I'd have to double check that because I, I don't want to give us some trouble with um, with the state about, you know, what we can and can't do. We can only provide factual information that um, but we can look into doing that.
So that does have.
Yes, yeah, we will make that available. We'll put that on the website if it's not already there. Um, and we'll have copies available to give to the people, you know, if they come into the meeting, we'll be able to hand them to them. We'll be providing quite a bit of literature.
Any other questions? Right. I'd another three, discuss a, especially on the emergency food truck ordinance. He got.
So we put this um at a request to consider some food to amendments for our food truck ordinance um to make it uh easier to facilitate a commercial property owner to allow for the use of a, as a temporary food truck site um for, you know, a few days out of a week or a weekend or something along those lines. Uh, we have a couple of uh different ordinances that were provided to us, and then there's also a copy of our own uh that we currently have. So um, our, currently, Article five seven does allow for food trucks to be located on commercial property with a conditional use permit. However, uh, it also requires that the parcel or property currently be in use with a permanent business. This will require adequate parking, fire lanes, restroom facilities, running water uh with soap for hand wash. And I attached that ordinance for you. A meeting with the staff, uh, we, we talked about this, and there were some concerns uh about certain changes, and the concern was that there could be little food trucks popping up all up and down the road. Um, was one concern. Also, there's some state requirements uh where restroom facilities have to be secured. It doesn't have to be on that property, but it would have to be in close proximity. Like, if there was another business, they could get permission to use those restroom facilities for the employees of the food truck. That's one of the state uh guidelines. Uh, and then they, they also required that employees have a place to wash their hands with soap and water. And I think most of the food trucks probably have those. Um, but there, there's a couple of um, say, a couple of ordinances in here. Uh, it's, and I guess a lot of these things would be, I guess the challenge would be where the the locations are, what kind of street access they have, uh, if they have adequate parking, and I mean, there's a few things that come into play, but I don't think it would, would take a total rewrite of our ordinance, maybe just a few amendments if that's the direction you choose. Um, and then I, I asked uh Molly and Aaron to be here tonight, too. Is Molly here?
She has it.
Um, if there were any questions, you know, as far as the rules, regulations, and whatnots, um. And it's, it's whatever y'all's choice. If you want us to prepare a recommendation, certainly we'll do that and have it for you next month.
The, the hours operations uh being limited to like six hours in a twenty-four hour period. Uh, if they can be created consecutive days, then they have to be gone three consecutive days according to this one ordinance that we have here.
Correct.
Uh, and then that one, it didn't say anything about restroom facilities. You say that as a state requirement?
Yes, sir.
The state requirement is they would have to have access to some reasonable access.
It has to be a close proximity, doesn't have to be the same property, but if somewhere close, say, you know, you could run to it, wash your hands, or restroom, do whatever you need to. But, and I think most of the food trucks, uh, and we probably, if we do make a change, we probably need to change our after include the trailers, too, because a lot of these things are trailers that come in, they're, they're not the trouble. Uh, get that covered, too, but they, most of those have a sink uh and can wash hands, so that is not the issue so much as restrooms. Uh, and like I say, if it's a commercial property, chances are there's something close by where that, that can be accommodated.
I know uh, I've had, had one person really saying that our, our ordinance is way too restrictive uh to meet the southern one I filed, was almost way too the other direction. Uh, so I, I think if we can find something to do with that, facilitate getting something where, where, where we could get the food, food truck coming in, set up all weekend or whatever. I know it's, it's a profitable little business for some people that a lot of people who were here in the downtown area, wrong down towards the downtown area. Um, yeah, where we want to set up or anything, so.
I think can Molly can maybe, I don't know what we've discussed here and what we've discussed in Taipei, and so that's where I'm not concerned. But the Taipei board is spending, making a significant investment in container park. And it is where you have a food truck park. Where we're going to have space, picnic tables, bathrooms, and dumpsters, and parking, and there's going to be designated areas to accommodate food trucks, so I think, I mean, I'm super excited about this project, but I would like to see us kind of keep that environment. I mean, we're going to offer a space for that type of business. My preference is that we kind of focus on building that up because I think it's gonna be a great area. If there's any changes in this ordinance, I don't know. I mean, are there any changes that we would need to make to the current ordinance? For food truck parks that we're planning?
No, um, not currently, no. We have everything the state requires and our ordinance requires.
Because I definitely um also have our facade grants program where we're working on trying to you know, improve the view of ones on the board, Main Street, and we're offering incentive for businesses to improve the outside of their buildings and everything, and if we have, if we open it up where we have food trucks and trailers just popping up in places, I don't know that I don't know that that's my preference, especially when we're working on building a an area that's going to.
And those were the, some of the considerations that came out of, out of the conversation. And I, I guess I would add that my, my understanding of this is that the biggest change that we would be making is, is to allow a property owner that owned a piece of commercial property, but it does not have an existing business on it. It's, it's, it's more ones that have open land that nothing is happening with, and they have an opportunity maybe to, to lease part of that for a few days a week or nights, or my, I, I'm not sure what the timeline can be. But right now, ordinance doesn't allow that because there's not an existing building with the CO on the side. It's more of some, some vacant property. Uh, it's, it's what, it's what.
I could add one thing. Places like Austin have food trucks that are there every day on a piece of property, and they have, they have zoning that allows that to for then you have the food trucks that come in for special events, like the three-day event or whatever, and, and those are treated differently. But I, I think I understand what you're saying, that if you have a dedicated spot where you have food trucks there all the time, you don't want to have all the competition just coming and going, and coming and going, and going. And anywhere.
Yes.
Well, a question I have is if we get a food truck in this area, what's that gonna do to our local residents if they have a big investment there? It would change the feel about that, and how our, telling people we need a new business coming in, and there's a food truck sitting next to it.
So the, the current ordinance, like if we do events at the park or, or whatever, we've had food trucks that will do a specific event.
Yeah, we can, we can do them under conditional use, or sometimes a special event permit we would pull, and we could just include the food truck component. We've done it fourth of July for several years. The park, there's a few places where the, one of the churches does it once or twice a year. So we, we do allow for those uh and we can do those. This, but but this is for a all those properties pretty much meet all the other obligations. But what, what the change here is, is it's a piece of property with no existing building on or no existing business, I can associate.
We addressed that, but also we can deny the permit. It's due to have a specific reason for it.
Some reason for denying, not being a qualification or some requirement of the state. But one thing, too, if someone came in with a food truck park, we could, I mean, we could, we could probably accommodate that zoning wise with uh plan development of some sort because I think there'd be a lot of conditions that wouldn't normally, would not normally apply to those obligations. Because you have different, I mean, normally you have the one building in a parking lot, those things in a commercial district for a, for a plan development, we would have the option of looking at a site-specific project, and we could, we could, at that point, how we'd make a decision, is that somebody would want the downtown area? No, we don't want that at all in the downtown area, or something where we could, we could do that as well. We could do that through the PD process if we had to. I think the, the question is, I see is, do you want, are, are we envisioning like an area that has food trucks most of the time? You know, one specific area, or, or, or they be scattered throughout the city at various times, and I mean, the kind of question Johnny brought up, then they pop up and and, and again, it's it's hard for them to pop up in the sense that they had to be on someone's private property to do that, but that, you know, that could occur.
We have some that show up now. Every now and then you'll see one that pops in on the weekends, and they'll set up for a day, sell barbecue or um, you know, street tacos or whatever they serve. I mean, that it's not every weekend, but every now and then you do see them, that, where they'll show up somewhere.
And our, and our ordinance does not have that.
No, actually, it does not. Um, but there, it's, it's a matter of, you know, catching them and pulling them out. I mean, the ordinance allows for with conditional use permit. If they don't get that permit, then and most of them don't, though, they just pull in, they do their thing, and then they let them go. Usually just for a day or just for an evening, and then they're gone. I don't think it's a huge widespread problem, but you do see it every now.
I would say that it's a big problem. Truly create the problem by doing this. I think this cleaned up the language a little bit. Sounds to me like, and kind of clarifies some of the particulars in the ordinance on what we, what we would allow, what we wouldn't allow, would I do caution is, well, and if there's not a restroom the, next to that vacant property, then they're, they're gonna get denied on their permit, just anyway. So it, it, putting that in there is just gonna clean up the language to where it, it, it does give us the leeway to allow them in a conditional use, and I think three days is not gonna hurt. Any goal.
Taking current.
Not on vacant property.
Not, not on vacant property. That, that would need to change, and I, and we should, I think we should add language for the trailers, too.
And yeah.
Yeah, a lot of these guys are, they're pulling in trailers.
In the kitchen.
I think they all are, yeah. Food trucks, you just kind of think the terminology.
Like the mobile food establishment. Old trucks anyway.
And that might even like, it might even just chances to them.
And the current ordinance we have, too, was in, in with the property across the street in mind. When all that was here, we, we had a specific location that we thought that may go, and it didn't turn out not to, not to go there. We had done a development agreement with them, I said, I had to create an agreement with them, and, and so that looked at the property across the street and at the earlier stage.
Where that parking lot is, that's actually why we acquired that property for a food truck park, and kind of at the last minute, the developer pulled out. So we just, we had a whole, we had renderings, it was gonna be nice. Outdoor stage.
Well, and I think that's kind of leads to the plan that.
And I, that, I think that's where we're going down there. Plus, this component is, is gonna have the facilities for them to clean up, and so that's gonna be that's gonna be a big.
Into encouraging, you know, once we get it developed, that we encourage that location's for food trucks, because I think it's gonna have the facilities to, we've got parking, and we've got bathrooms, we've got seating, we've got dumpsters, and we've got, you know, whatever, so it's a little bit more organized, you know, by having.
And I think you'll see most of them. That's where they'll go.
I don't know that I necessarily am. With removing. So this is looking to remove the request to allow them on, to not allow them on vacant lots. And remove. The restriction. That shall be removed on a daily basis. It cannot be parked longer than four hours. That looks being proposed as being moved. Are there the other, so if you think there are stars? Are those the two?
That, those are the two things I think that. Are what our current, current, current ordinance doesn't allow for.
I don't think. My friends don't make those changes. If there's something that needs to be changed, once we get the part built to eliminate. That plan then. That my personal. Encourage people to go to that location where it's.
So in all consensus, deliciously things by Taylor?
That, that's my preference.
Like we should. Allow it to move that weekend.
He had a food truck. And he, he had asked about me. Yeah, I mean. Was there, I mean, who, who? Who brought this to the attention? Where are they willing to be?
This is all we're doing. They wanted to discuss about it. Enjoy the discussion. And, and. I'm kind of like, mind if, if we could just set the language where there's possibility, but it has to have a condition, a unit permit or a special. And restrictions with that. But I mean, basically what we've got now is, is just as good. So that's. But I, I was asked to bring this up. And, yeah, this is.
Let them be. Like it, 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 this twelve hour. Maybe, maybe reworded to where it says. You're allowed three consecutive days. But it has to be gone. After that three days, not left there permanently and you can open it up three days. Then it's just. You know what I mean? Um, that would. Eliminate the possibility of having any town set up everywhere. If I wanted to have one over three days a week and get it still. All we're saying.
And then after.
At least. And I think we do that and worrying that. Give us an out to. We, we have several, several things to give us out. One is. Facilities available. The other will be the.
I didn't see how our container park thing will work. We will be putting direct conflict between the two. If we jump out there and get in food trucks, then we got our little container park.
Feel like we should sit around and probably after years wait on something to be done.
It's maybe.
Yeah, yes.
That's just my. We don't, do we have to act immediately?
I guess we're just looking for some direction. If you want us to amend it and bring it back, we will. If you want to leave it alone, we'll do that too.
Feel like okay. Because I don't think we're gonna have that.
I don't know why maybe mine, yeah, but I. I don't see a problem with them making lots.
Will not be the right pictures. All the.
Right, but they can still have a right, but they're on a. What we're talking about is a lot of them just pull up on a empty vacant lot. Those, those are probably parking or, you know. Because today if somebody wanted to, to come in and set up a food truck on. Parking lot wherever those cross the street from.
Well, I mean, the parking could, could come into a problem because the, your state. The guidelines do require for fire lanes and adequate parking. I mean, it, it's, it could be that a grassy piece of property. I mean, that may be an issue. There might not be some sort of emergency service parking. I guess we'd have to take what that, that, that is food and requirements that. The food truck requirements for, that the state requires you to food truck operate.
We would also be a. They didn't need that. We would be state ready.
So. How we. Look at what that ordinance might look like. And bring it back to discussion for session next month.
And I think have a better understanding of what pizzas are not in this ordinance because they're state requirements that we don't.
We're running out what those requirements are too.
I don't know the courts, that's received that needs regarding that project.
Okay, they are, they believe that uh, they'll be starting the slicing process. Uh, in August. Uh, mid-August or so, they believe they'll be through with all the lines by the end of August. And be able to start turning subscribers on. Uh, mid to late August. About seventy-five percent is. Uh, in. The rest of it will get finished up and then they've got to come in and. Put the wires together to get them ready to go to individual houses and the boxes that are there in, and then they'll go and start hooking people up. So they think about the end of August. They'll start being, being ready to turn people on.
Um, was this? Is the park that's, that's underground what's clean or is they still have more to put underground?
I think they still have some more to put underground, but uh, most, most of it is there.
I, I've noticed out there, working here lately. Uh, see all the orange wires sticking up to the ground that.
Yeah, uh, I don't know. I know they're boring a lot. I don't know where they are. I haven't. When I spoke to Ray, he was on vacation and so I wasn't able to get a map or see how far they've gotten, but it's probably something we could get if we ask for it.
Last time I saw was they were up in Lake Air. Down that hill, uh, of Lake Air off of the, the.
And they could have the ground stuff done. They're finishing up the overhead. There's not a whole lot of overhead though. Um, so I don't. Uh, and some of that too, I, I don't know where they're putting it, but I'll reach out to them, try to find out specifically where they are. Hopefully by the next time we meet, they're. Turning people's switches on.
Awesome. Okay, anybody have any other questions about that? Hey, I had another five to discuss and received an update on the repuges and recycling service.
Good evening. I, I was supposed to last month, you asked for an update on the, the way the next time collect. Trash collection. That's why I actually have Abel here, if you have any questions, um. I am proposing to, to go to the automated uh, pickup where they have the larger ninety-six gallon wheel carts. Um, but I'd also like to discuss the possibility of going to once a week pickup. Um, we are always planning a keep on our streets and we have three of the trash trucks, two trash trucks and a recycling truck. Running up and down our streets. Uh, every single week, so it is taking its toll, especially on the cul-de-sacs that are pushing out. As a payment. So, um, I asked Abel to give us some numbers uh, on the presentation that he provided. They are uh, offering to do the same price going down to once a week. Uh, with a thirty percent increase on the commercial business. Uh, we renew our contract in twenty twenty-four. Um, it. It also chooses to go ahead and renew it early, uh, both through an extension on our contract and bulk pricing, but. As Abel has stated, as they are, they need some pretty significant increases, um, just the cost of fuel and just general upkeep and dated daily. Operations, so we have been holding our rates still very low compared to some other cities. Um, they also provide services for. Um, so. I don't have any questions at all about the presentation itself. Um, the recycling would actually go for the wheel carts as well and get away from the little tiny. Uh, when he did her fine damage. Uh, twice per week. Uh, let's see.
For about three dollars.
No, uh, and then also we did talk a little bit about doing a bulk pickup. We did provide. Too often for that, we have spoken a little bit about the need for people to get rid of larger items on occasion. Um, it also, he offered too often. One would be like the subscription base, so everybody would be charged for it, whether or not they used it. Or they could use more on the little call or a new policy. Hey, I have stuff that needs to be fixed up and I'll schedule it. Um, and then it would be thirty-five dollars per yard for that service. So I, I would propose to allow the citizens to call and say, hey, I have items to pick up instead of charging everybody for something that they may or may not use first. So I know we talked about this previously. There was a lot of. We're not sure. There was a lot of unclear information. People feel very strongly about this.
Yeah, sure do.
So now that we have very clear pricing information.
Yes, Steve.
I would love if we could send a very clear survey back to our residents because what we sent out. Before was not. It, it didn't make sense based on the fact that we didn't have a clear number from what it was going to be. It was making some assumptions that we weren't. Pretty sure. Yeah, but if we go down to one day a week or if we raise their price, they're way, somebody will be there. Oh, I just need to know who's going to get those in the post stand. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll look at it. I'm also curious though, if our program's putting up a renewal. Is, will we be going out for bid to other vendors as well? Uh, I believe Mike, he said that we went out for bid at last year when we, or not last year, at the beginning of our.
Did, I think we got. Number six responses back.
What's the typical timeframe for when?
That was the first time we had done it in. Probably fifteen years. We just hadn't done it. We continued to renew the contract. We weren't having problems. We weren't having complaints. Everything was going well. Price was holding very steady. And so we, we didn't, but what we, what we saw when we did the bid last year was. What I consider significant increases in the cost of service. With everyone except we would have. Uh, we did that.
If, if I may.
This is Abel.
My name is Abel Moreno, District Manager. East Connection. Uh, in honor of Mayor Council. So give the briefly talk about pricing because that's a big concern, right? When you compare. Right now, if you look around uh, Cleveland, which does its own trash. They have once a week and they're sixteen eighty. Um, White Settlement sixteen seventy-three, Watago sixteen fifty-three. So.
And that's just trash or the trash can or something?
So Watago is trash and recycling once a week. At sixteen fifty-three. White Settlement is once a week. Both trash and recycling for sixteen seventy-three. And we don't service those two cities. Um, Cleveland's like, I've paid a great service their own, so that once a week is sixteen eighty. Uh, now it's go to the twice a week, you're looking at twenty dollars. And up. Which we're only proposing seventeen. And some change. Now. Being your current provider, we can, we have options, right? We have a C P I of the city, my league two years. So. We work well with the city. We're a good partner. I get a phone call, hey, can you make a donation or have me move me in the park? Can you help South? Yeah, absolutely. Not a problem. Uh, we've been in this city for so long that the relationships have been there and it's, you know. I'm a phone call away from, from Mike or Amber giving me a call saying, hey, I need, this is what I need. Can you help me out with this resident? And we take care of it. With that said, I know pricing is a concern, but uh, with those numbers I, I've given you today, we're, we're right there even with the proposal for an extension.
Um, is there going to be a cost for changing to the? Different. Recycled totes. The big ninety gallon. Or is that going to be just a swap?
It's just going to be a swap. So those price, the pricing that you see in front of you, that, that is for going to the ninety-six gallon recycling. We're going to just go away from the eighteen gallon bins. If, if you think about today, the Amazon boxes.
Uh, you don't even have to tell me. My driveway, the corner of my lawn and, and although I don't want to wheel this thing all the way up there. I'm tired of picking up trash because those bins, I set them out, I leave for a quarter and it's, it's over half the country, but I'm like getting on work. And half of it didn't get picked up because it's outfield. Um, anything lit on that is going to be a bonus. I do believe in recycling and been asking for these lidded. Containers for a while. I think it's. I think it's great. And it doesn't bother me one where. Once a week or twice a week. Um, where, so I was saying. I'd rather not have food that can scratch down.
And the customer can get additional parts at, at some minimal price. That's like three or four bucks a month. They're pretty minimal. So if, if you wanted to little parts, I think they hold tradition about greedy parts, garbage bags.
Free food. Or free offering new parts. Just regular trash too. Okay.
And this is only. Wrap them, additional trucks, then we would be moving away from hand pickup to automated trucks, so. They are incurring a significant expense and really not. Yeah.
It's, it must be true, the big concern. In every community is we're doing away with jobs. Well, that's, that's not the case. Today, to find helpers to do this job is incredibly difficult. Uh, if you look at the help wanted signs around your own community. Uh, I mean, Domino's is paying twenty dollars an hour to deliver pizza. So just imagine how hard it is to find. Anyone to, to do that job. It's really hard. So we're not gonna, we're not, nobody's losing their job. We're gonna absorb. That. Those jobs, when they go away, we're just not going to read them here.
Remember the last time we had this discussion, uh. The purchasing of the venture car. Has that been accomplished? Do we have already?
Yes, sir.
Ready to pull the trigger on this?
Yes, sir, we are. That was, yeah, that was big. Or those trucks were like a year and a half out. We've already got trucks in our fleet now. To handle it, um. If you give us, I, I strongly suggest we, we give this. If you give us, I I strongly suggest we we give this, you know, a few months. Uh, to communicate and also with the time I'll need it, I have no problem getting in front of all the residents. And kind of go over going over it, showing a video, having part out. And just kind of going through the whole process and the change. Uh, I can tell you from experience, I've I've done this a lot. Uh, made made this change quite a bit in a lot of communities, that first month is the hardest. Right? Because because you got to change, people have questions, they're confused, they're trying to make it difficult because.
They know strongly about their trash.
Right, right, but I'm I'm telling you. I'm telling you, after a month and a half. You don't hear anything, it's it's like, oh, okay, this wasn't so bad.
Have you had the decent of gone from twice a week to?
Yes, uh, quite a bit, we, uh, I've been a part of part of those moves, nothing here locally, um. Nothing recently, I did have, we're we're based out of Halkum City, they did go to automation, but uh they stuck with the twice a week. And you know, it just depends on on the preference, you know, some cities, they can afford the the streets and the upkeep. And some cities ban, it just depends what what the needs are for for the individual city.
I've had had the experience, this automated thing before I moved to Josh, wasn't my like. But I've also just for the heck of it, asked two people about one or twice a week and they were adding about twice a week. That we got kids and we. I I don't really would like a poll now.
I'm getting ready to do the mail out and I can put a link in there so they can just fill it out, or I may just put the survey in there also with an option. Yeah, what I could do is like a pros and a cons for both of them.
Was it the trash can belonged to citizens, so we always keep your trash can, but the green ones, we would take that. Throw your trash cans away.
Yeah.
We did this uh last year in Halkum City, both residents, if they wish, they can just throw the can inside the ninety ninety six gallon container. It fits the majority of them, unless someone has a ninety five, ninety six gallon container and.
It looks like somebody. It worked, I still drive it, I don't rent anything out there, parking right beside the street, they still make it back, and you know what, one thing that I love.
I did ask Abel to, because we do have elderly residents and some of them are not gonna be able to get the carts out there because they are significantly larger. But I do want to speak on that about.
Yeah, so what what we do in those instances is. We suggest the city have a a way to qualify to be a handicap or or an elderly. If you don't do that, you're gonna have everybody wanting service, right? So so as long as they qualify, which you know, it's it's up to the city how they want to do it, but we can take that responsibility as well. Again, up to the city, but what we will do is we will put a stake of waste connections, it's got one of our logos on it. Small, put it on your uh in the front yard and whoever the driver is, they know, they see that stake. That they've got to get out of their truck, regardless of what kind of truck it is, automated, reload, they've got to get out of their truck. Go up to the to the driveway, the side of the house, we won't jump fences, we won't, uh obviously, you know. We're not gonna break the law, but if we see the can from the street, we're gonna go and get it and bring it, dump it and put it back where where it came. So. No extra cost, that's part of the penalty.
The three dollars per yard or monthly fee that everybody can get assessed, three dollars. Um, how do you determine what a yard trash is?
Yeah, I need I need to visualize.
Yeah, it's sitting on.
So what we, what how we gave it is we will call, we will tell the resident. I'll give a hypothetical city, a resident calls the city and says, hey, I want this bulk pickup, I need, I got a bunch. So he goes, you need to call up Waste Connection, schedule a a meeting with them, they'll come out and you guys will agree. On what what it is that you have on your front yard, when they call us, we will tell them. Look, you can put about four yards in the back of the fourth range. So kind of gauge it, we're gonna come out there, we're we're gonna have a conversation, we're gonna agree on the price. But pretty much you can put four yards on the back of the fourth range, so kind of gave in your head. Now, if you've got everything across your front yard, well, that's a lot more than four yards, so get ready, you're gonna pay. But you know, that's kind of what we tell them, and then we go, a supervisor will go out and tell them this this looks about ten yard. The the thing about it is you'd be surprised. People only use that service when it's. I I I took that, when it's, I took down a tree, okay, you're gonna have to cut it up because our equipment's gonna break. If we could pick up a tree, you're gonna have to cut it up, it won't come out, it's probably gonna take. And it's about twenty yards, so this is what it's gonna be, do you agree? If so, we'll take care of it.
So when we do our periodic cleanup event. Once a year, once a year. Is that a significant cost to the city to facilitate that?
Yes.
For overtime, for sure.
We got overtime, we have. Just the general dismisses to go with it, we get X amount of containers free, that's in the contract. And we typically go through those in the first cleanout, we typically pay all of the second one. And just depending on the time of year, the spring ones usually are a little a little heavier, um. But yeah, we get, we get a lot of stuff. Chemicals are a different, that's what the city.
Cleanup events or?
I think we could do away with one of them, my my concern, if we do away with both of them, is that we may start seeing stuff on the side of the roads again. And we don't see that a whole lot now with this cleanup, we used to do four of them, but they were grant funded. And then when that grant ran out, they just, it's got to be expensive to do, plus very taxing on the staff, because it. You know, those guys work hard when they're doing that stuff, and so. Yeah, and then stuff is out there for several days, still getting it hauled off, and so it's it's a it's a big deal to do those. Um, I but I think we should, we should always keep one, and I would think the one in the spring. Show you is it probably would help the cities. Spring and fall, you know, are are very useful, but yes, it would, I think it would limit us down to probably what. Initial dumpsters that you get out there. It could, yeah, because usually with one, you. We get, we get, I mean, they give us quite a few, but we we fill them up. And people bring. Seen it all. And we typically pull a lot of the metal and stuff out, we'll take and sell that for scrap and send that out, but. We we get furniture, bricks, it's it's serious, it's amazing, boy.
But with the option, like like Abel said, if they had a downed tree or something, they're not just stuck with it sitting in their yard.
Right, and if it were me, I'd most rather have them come pick the tree up than me having it up and haul it off somewhere.
No, probably don't.
There's benefits to having.
No. Fair assumption.
Concerned about going down to once a week, but they do have the option to get a secondary can, so it's just. It just wouldn't be picked up twice, but if the cans outside, they at least have a place to put it until whatever day they.
Uh, it's between soft pricing, but it's between four and six dollars for another can.
So if I happen to have one of the large containers that I currently have right now. Does your equipment work with that or does it have to be door?
It it has to be a quick special. And you know, you you want it that way, you know.
That's very clear on the two options. Once a, you know, say at twice a week and your price is going to be X. Go to once a week and the price is going to be Y. Have a bulk pickup though, I'm I'm really want, because I I don't, I want to make it a very clear question. I don't want to repeat it. Personally, I think the thirty five dollar thing, I don't think that's a good idea. I think the three dollar one is gonna encourage people to just get the trash out there whenever they have it. But I don't know.
For the survey purpose, will we continue with the bulk pickup that's in our contract now for Thursdays, or does that go away?
Charging everybody, this, when we did change, we're doing their buildings. They did make it where they they didn't want recycling, then they could just not pay for it. So there were some people pretty upset because lots of them paid for this for a year. And not using it, so there is a flip side to that.
When you're saying bulk, I currently had an old care, I set out, you know, got it. You cannot do that anymore, that's correct.
It would only be what's on the car. Oh, we'd like to add, though, we we do, uh, we have the Turkey Creek landfill, so there is an option to go to the landfill.
That's what we forget about that. Yeah, our current contract allows, I think, once or twice a year that you can, that's. I think it's twice because we did that, when we did away with the four cleanups and went to two, then they gave us. Person can call and schedule the time, they can make two trips to the land.
This bulk option, applicable option.
If it's okay, I'll put it together, I'm gonna send it out here, y'all to look at and make sure we're good before it goes out to everyone.
Very much, we do so much for your time, it's an honor to serve the city.
Okay, moving right along. Item number E, update from the mayor, Ted Glitter, and from city staff members, you may have anything they want to talk about? All right, moving right along then, uh, I met public forum presentation for recognition. Uh, sitting by citizens, if you find any topic, however, with the item is specifically noted on this agenda, the city council will get required. Under the Texas Open Meetings Act to limit its response to responding with a statement of specific factual information. Reciding cities visiting policy are directed to make an order to visit city staff about an issue, therefore. No council deliberation is permitted, first we'll uh have three minutes to speak, I have a request here from uh Jamie Jones. Uh, concerning the Johnson County County Attorney. Jones?
Hi, Jamie Jones, and it's so good to see the same familiar faces, guys, um, I go to every city in Johnson County. Before the reunion to let everybody know what's going on, what we have to offer, because. We're all the cities in Johnson County and I want to see everybody there with us, um. But I love coming to Joshua's City Council, it it's just warm and fuzzy and it makes you feel, so. What I have is our um, our schedule for the week, it starts August the thirtieth. And we will start with the parade on August the thirtieth, I want to make sure that we get everybody involved. Every car, every float, every child, we'll do the baby contest, the, um. Baby contest, we are looking for queen contestants, um with our queen contestants who who uh. Police and fire, um, so we'll start with our with our parade on Wednesday the thirtieth, the, um. We want everybody involved, I did break in our new chief of police and chief of fire last year, so they did let me know that. But, um, this year, we're gonna just keep making it bigger and better, we've got the parade, we'll have the the queen contestants that night. If you know a business in Johnson County that wants to sponsor a queen, we would love to have the scholarship involved with that person wins. Uh, and these days, every dollar counts when you talk about education. Um, and then, of course, Wednesday, Thursday night, we'll have the baby contest, so if you've got babies, grandbabies, great grandbabies, bring them up there. Um, let's watch these kids um go across the stage, our theme this year is the fifties. And I told everybody that I've talked to, you don't have to put your cooler skirt on or your body socks, but if you want to, we're still gonna let you in. Um, then of course, on Friday night, we have our little contest, it's bigger and bigger these days. Um, Saturday, we'll have vendors on the ground, we'll also have wrestling inside the pavilion from one thirty to three thirty. Don't get me on that one because I don't have a clue, but then we'll also, that afternoon, we will have, um. Our scant will be playing at seven, but at six, I will be honored to do the first responder for the third year. And I'm looking to all the police and fire to pick out your nominee for that, send me your bio so I can get that done. We can get those, um, little trophies made, there is a deadline. Everything is in here, we've got our bake off on Saturday, the carnival opens on Wednesday, it will go through Saturday night. If anybody has any questions or they want to do something, we are looking for volunteer of anybody that wants, um. We want to bring everybody out, have a good time and contact information is there and. I appreciate your time, I do appreciate you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Where's 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 it done?
Um, it's at one eleven reunion drive, it's on the hill as you're going down thirty five. Around, I've got a sign, if I get a big digital sign put out there, so it's not lost anymore.
Say that again. I had the honor of being there last year to be the winner of uh our police and fire. Recipients of the awards and and it was neat to see, um, the different cities show up. Get parade, they're they're good guys. They may be appreciated in public, it may not be their particular city public, but in general, countywide. It it was an honor to get to go and to be a part of that.
It's very emoting, looking at look at the recipient as I read the bios.
Um, but, yeah, and we weathered a pretty good storm. Um, but, yeah, and we weathered a pretty good storm. And that day, we were watching a very good storm roll in about that afternoon.
You got it.
Well, it was like the first pain that we had gotten.
Wasn't there anybody else who'd like to speak this time? Okay, moving on to item G, consent agenda, uh, do we want to consider these all in one vote, or do we talk about each other separate? Okay, uh, we're going to discuss, consider possible action on meeting minutes. From June fifteenth, twenty twenty three, best considering possible action on development agreement, authorized city managers. And that's a certain possible action on resolution of ending city Joshua investment policy by adding the finance directors as a main investment officer. Okay, I had motion by Shelley to accept this consent agenda seconded by Johnny, any discussion? All is in favor? Okay, item A, our date, regular agenda, number one. This time we're open to public hearing, which is September twenty four. Uh, on a request to attend amendment section five point two permitted use table down the cap forty to the zoning. Ordinance by repealing the community or social buildings contained in the institution or slash government. Use of fortunate, we made use table and replacing it with landing use type assembly hall private and event center, Mr. Maldonado.
Go ahead.
The zoning ordinance. Ordinance has a definition of the assembly hall private and event centers. As a meeting where events space utilized advances. Conventions, weddings, gatherings of individuals or leads by a private company. Commended use table has a similar use of community or sofa bill. Buildings listed in the table that should be replaced with the assembly hall private event centers. There's no definition for a community or sofa buildings listed in the zoning ordinance. And I've attached a, a, a sample of the, uh, section of the permitted use table. Uh, so it was. Simply removing the community or sofa building, and we want to replace it with the assembly hall private.
It's your.
So there's no. Patient, there's a thing. That, right? Right? Right, so at six forty six, we're going to close the.
Seven.
Seven forty six. We're closing the hearing. Though item number two, consider, discuss the center of possible action on approving ordinance section five point two. Staple down the chapter four, zoning ordinance by repealing the. Government uses a port of minimum use table and placing unused type assembly hall private to the event center. Is there any discussion or questions? Any second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by, uh. To. Accept the change seconded by Shelley, is there any discussion? All is in favor? Commanders? Item number three, discuss the center of possible action on orders approving the amendment section three point seven point double oh seven. Basis for establishing the areas of special flood hazard, the article three point oh seven flood hazards. Chapter three building regulation of the drug enforcement to the city of Joshua.
Love insurance rate back on the love insurance study. Five September twenty first, twenty first, twenty twenty twenty. The purpose of the revision to section three point oh seven point zero zero seven. Of the code of ordinances to adopt the new victims dates with the firm involved. F I S panel, nothing has changed from the, uh, old ordinance, so everything just. Let's stay the same.
Is there any change, what an act at all? No. Exactly, that's good. Okay, so, uh, any questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Okay, so I have a motion by Angela to approve, uh, the ordinance. To amend section three point oh seven point zero zero seven basis. For establishing the areas of special flood hazard, article six point oh seven flood damage prevention, chapter three delivery, she's in the. For the city of Joshua. Seconded by Mike, is there any discussion? All is in favor? Commanders? Item number four, discuss the center and possible action on resolution authorizing and permitting the publication. Of a notice of intention to use certificates obligation complying with requirements contained in here in securities and exchange commission rule seventeen C two dash twelve. And providing the effective date, just to be clear.
Mary's times the. E D C and park board, um. Has gone through the process of. Setting up park updates. This would be the issue debt to one point two million dollars. To replace. Just about everything but the. To replace or remake it, there'll be new shade structures, there'll be new playground equipment, splash pad will be reworked, um. New, uh. So resurfaced basketball court of resurfaced. And fenced so that, uh, we won't be driving on it anymore. Uh, there'll be some fencing added to the park to prevent people from getting off road problems that we've had. Uh, the mulch playground will be removed and replaced with synthetic turf. New playground structures, shade structures. Dates to just virtually everything out there. And we expect that the, this process will end in the fall. There's already one out there. Smart.
Yes.
Oh, the disc golf.
It'd be at it.
You'll be able to replace this. Uh, Andrew Friedman from Samco, who is our bond counsel, um, is here to answer questions and to tell you how this is gonna work.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Andrew Friedman with Samco. Uh, headed out the timetable and behind that a pro forma analysis, uh. Seeking to issue certificates of obligation through the city. Um, but the actual repayment of these obligations. Will come via, uh, the four B, they'll enter into a financing and use agreement at the time of the sale. Or they'll contract with the city to transfer annually to that service, so this isn't. Going on the tax rate is not being, uh, paid, but we are lending our credit worthiness as the city of Joshua. Uh, and it's comes down to, uh, getting the best interest rate we possibly can, the alternative would be for the. Uh, E D C to issue sales tax revenue bonds. Those carry a higher interest rate and they carry more restrictive bond covenants, uh, certainly you can do that, the city has the legal wherewithal to do that. Uh, should you want to, and it's just a very efficient way of, uh, going about this financing. Uh, and so if you all is determined to move forward with this this evening, just as we've done certificates of obligation have. A notice of intention will go in the paper on the website, forty six days after which have a lap. Uh, we'll take bids, that goes for September twenty first. So it'd be back then, uh, with the interest rate in hand, in hand, and you would be awarding the sale at that time. On the twenty first as well, uh, ideally just prior to the start of the city council meeting, the E D C board would convene. And approve that financing and use agreement so that, uh, they are, the E D C is on the hook. Before the city council actually sells that debt. So your bond attorney is working on, uh, that financing and use agreement now, done very often throughout, uh, the state, projects like this are done in the same. Uh, manner by cities all over the state as well, very comfortable with that approach, and then if all goes according to plan, funds delivered October eighteenth and and ready to spend. Uh, the second page of this pro forma, uh, one of the things we want to look at, it means anybody borrowing money is going to be able to repay it, so we look. Uh, it's a, uh, component fund of the city's financials, the gross sale tax receipt of the E D C left its operating expenditure. To determine, uh, how much capacity does it have for, uh, to take on debt service? Generated net of expenses six hundred and forty two thousand dollars in the fiscal year, uh, one million two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars with principal repaid. Uh, over the course of a tenure, roughly a hundred and forty two thousand, so they can very comfortably, uh, support the payment to to the interest based, uh, project. The one thing that I would ask, um, the notice of intention before you all is for one point two million dollars. Typically, when we go out to the public markets, we structure the bids so that we issue one point two million dollars and we receive one point two million dollars by getting the bidder to bid a premium. With the way the market is right now, uh, and we'd like to go the private placement route, I'd ask you to increase and we can. Strike through it here in the meeting to increase that amount to one million two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to cover. Cost of issuance and the potential cost of issuance. Missed the winning bid, so that we're still delivering one point two million dollars, uh, to the project fund. Uh, and if you all will do that, I'll have the bond lawyer to send over a revised ordinance in the morning as well as revised notice that'll then go to the paper. Uh, and on your website, so it can be done by, uh, making it a part of your motion and simply, uh, line editing that, I think, or redlining that, uh, here this evening. One million two hundred percent size out of the level. I think that's a high estimate of what the cost could be, but they're not all known until we have the the best bids in hand, we'll submit, we'll solicit this to all local regional banks. Uh, some of them have their own attorneys that they want to charge for, we take all those fees into consideration in the way. Who submitted the best interest rate, uh, but we don't know what all of them could potentially be included in the. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We said here that, uh, four percent is just for illustration.
Yes. It's hard to know right now, I sold, uh, I sold a two hundred million dollar bond on Tuesday for a school district, and that carried a triple A rating. Their thirty year borrowing rate, uh, was four point oh three percent. So we're talking about a much shorter duration, we don't enjoy the same triple A credit rating that schools do, uh, because they have the permanent school fund guarantee. But I would estimate we've got a higher yield curve in the first several years, um. We're somewhere probably around the three and a half percent range. And we'll have to see, the Federal Reserve meeting next Wednesday, and they're supposed to be raising rates twenty five more basis points, so, uh, a lot of, a lot of game to play between now and September one first.
No, just, um, I'll just comment, because Merle's not here, he's on the, the B board, but I know the A board also. Operates off of sales tax, and we, we've been very, very fortunate. Over the increase in our top, our sales tax revenue to be able to do these things, so I think. It's probably a very comfortable question that the, the type B board has, and being confident and. Going forward to this, uh, it's a.
Does this affect any of the other parks?
It will, because we're gonna, n- not this money per se, unless. We just come in and save all kinds of money, but some of the implements that are in the park now, we plan on moving to the other parks. The swing sets and some of those things that are still pretty good and useful, we'll replace the, change the stuff on them and then. Plant those in the other park, that's kind of the plan. That will get some of them, uh, and then possibly the, the one in Joshua. We also have funds, though, in the, the park dedication. Uh, funds, uh, that, that are. That's funded by developers, um, we were looking at using some of those money to build out those two new neighborhood parks too, so we didn't, we didn't want to issue debt for those.
Uh, part of this one point two million is also to put fence completely around the basketball.
Correct, it is.
Be a fence around the entire park. And a. Cable, cable across the front of the park and the basketball court, big screen with a ten foot. Chain.
The Z entrance.
I'm not sure what the entrance will be, something similar to that, just mainly. Keep the cars off of it and keep the basketballs out. And bicycle, well, bicycles may still get on it, but will, there'll also be cameras this time too. This also includes a lot of those security upgrades for the cameras too.
So the twenty first of September, council meetings, will we vote to? Do the final approval on this?
Yes, this is the first legal step to starting the process, you're not, uh, committing the issue of the debt until that meeting on the twenty first.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'm open for motion.
I think I mentioned that we approved the publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in the amount of one million two hundred and sixty thousand.
So I have a motion by Shelley to authorize and through the publication notice of intention to issue certificate of obligation complying with requirements. Contained in the securities and exchange commission rule fifteen C two dash twelve and providing an effective date, which. That will all be part of the.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I have a second by Johnny. Any discussion? All is in favor? Commanders? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Item number five, discuss the center of possible action on the interlocal. Cooperation agreement with Johnson County for the housing of city Joshua class C misdemeanor offenses in the Johnson County jail.
The agreement this year.
I need to bag on me about.
The agreement is the same as last year, the cost. I did put on there just for your reference. The house. Just past seniors meters, any offense. Possible confinement. Give you sheriff's. Very normal. All right, that's a very, that was a very normal agreement he's had in there.
If I have any questions? Any discussion? Okay, I've got a motion by my, that the interlocal cooperation agreement with Johnson County for the housing of city Joshua class C misdemeanor of Johnson County jail, section five Johnny. Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Commanders? Item number six, consider, discuss the center of possible action on a master services agreement between city of Joshua. And Vertisaw LLC to provide CAD RMS services, chief.
So this is the initial agreement between the city and our vendor, uh, the vendor is some of, or is an intermediary company. For, uh, Vertisaw to provide the software. Um, but this is the agreement which gets that process started, uh, as a, discussed in fact. We're moving to a new CAD and software and it's countywide. All the other agencies in Johnson County provide that service, they're moving in a different direction. You're not moving in the same direction. We're one of the parts of Perry. And this is actually that contract. Discovered by Johnson County. To get this process going, including the breakdown of the two to five. You can see your costs for the city, uh, police department, city. For years two. Um, just to reference our ransom preliminary numbers. Um, for fiscal year twenty three, the current fiscal year, again, the cost to the police department for. Add our most services and piece of work through the city of Burson. It's cost us, cost us this year eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars and the two cents. But, uh, year two, you can see that prices are almost two thousand dollars left, and we will not actually exceed that person from the year five. In addition to. Those costs, we, we spent another thirty, oh, four hundred dollars for ticket writing software. And another thousand dollars for a garden tracking software which allows us to track. And another thousand dollars for a garden tracking software which allows us to track used portions of this. Um, proceeds, advances, lead request, overtime request, training request. Soma offers that as part of their product, so we're going to save those money as well.
May I have any questions or discussion?
Move this through master service agreement between city of Joshua and Vertisaw LLC to provide. Had room service.
We have most importantly to approve. Uh, best services degree with city of Joshua and Vertisaw LLC to write head on the services. Uh, you can, part of the uh IT infrastructure that we're putting in, the uh dark cable. Uh, internet is to support this as well?
Initially, yes, but when we transitioned the pathway. That is.
Okay, that, that was passed through to the county. This is a whole different setup.
We're gonna see that next month.
Okay, so, um, that motion by Johnny seconded for discussion. Okay, most favor? Okay, item number seven, discuss the civil possible action on participating in the Texas short-term asset reserve program.
Aren't you excited? We have enough money to invest now? Molly hadn't spent yet.
So, um, as you mentioned, this is requesting participation in the Texas for term asset reserve program, so known as TechStar. Um, TechStar is a local government investment pool. The Texas local. Fund investment under chapter twenty-two, fifty-six of Texas government code. Um, this tool was created in April of two thousand and two, so it's been around quite some time. Um, was created through a contract and then it's participating governmental units and is discovered by board directors. To provide for the joint investments of participants' public funds. Um, JP Morgan Investments Management. Has served as its investment advisor since it's. TechStar's investment policy, which was included in the agenda packet. Um, seeks to invest full assets in a manner that will provide for preservation. And safety of principal and competitive investment return while meeting daily funding needs. Of the participants by utilizing economies of scale and professional investment expertise. Um, the TechStar Cash Reserve Fund is rated triple A M. By S and P Global, which is the highest principal stability fund rating assigned. TechStar is conservatively, conservatively managed in full compliance with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. And also compliance with uh city of Joshua's investments, see that was. Um, by being a local government investment pool, um, and that's listed as authorized investments in that policy. Um, participants are able to access funds daily with no penalties and there's no minimum allowance required. Um, interest is accrued daily, paid monthly, and um. Participating in TechStar will increase the amount of interest revenue that the city is receiving.
Captain has to make up what the difference in returns will be.
It's gonna be variable to how much we have in it. I, I mean, I looked at um how much we had available to put into it. A substantial amount, um. Uh, the rates that we're getting now is three percent, so a little over, it's gonna go to five percent, so. There's a pretty big. Very big change in the rate, um, but just, I mean. Think y'all be happy to see it's the actual announcement I start coming in, but. Long can keep some of it in there and. Very good, I don't.
Okay, uh, do you know this TechStar have E S G season? Ethnic social governments.
They. I know that they are, um, in compliance with, um.
We'll talk about that later. Any other questions?
Other funds that you have, um, researched before, I think.
So there are a variety of different, um, investment pools like this, um. Or two of them have two different types of options, um, they've got a governmental. Very, a little more conservative than other ones that still fall within, um, what's your. Um, uh, I didn't. Include those in any of the ones that I wanted to recommend, just because.
You've researched that.
Yes, yes, and so they've got a little bit higher rate, but, I mean. And what they're investing in is, is fine also, it's just. For stay out of the. So I just picked the one that had the highest rates kind of over a couple of periods. Um, in those more easier options, um, we can have. Those four ones, we can have all four, if y'all set. I put research on another option, yeah, and we can do something like that too. If we want to, um, that's to y'all, just that we get, get things going with one and, um. Yeah, anytime you can do it online, other transactions online, say the transactions. So it's not tying any of the money up if somebody decides. They want to spend it and we need to transfer it over to a bank account and to write a check.
Get, get started with this thing. Reevaluate, see for any other programs you want as well, or whatever.
It is not that I have concerns about that, I was just, I was just doing a little bit of research. Nope, I'm good, I just.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Participating in the Texas short-term asset reserves.
So I have a motion by Shelley to participate in the Texas short-term asset reserve program seconded by. Angela, any discussion?
Other question? How will this be reported to us? Is this something that would be on our regular?
So in, in this, yes, you're gonna see the investment. Interest income on there, but, um, because this is an investment accounts, um. For to P F I N, we'll be doing early investment reports, so you will be seeing those probably. Orally combined with, um, the regular financial reports that you normally see to show, um. It's interest rates found within the account, um.
Okay, item number, discuss the civil possible action on approving provisions to the volunteer firefighter's nominal D distribution policy. Ms. Grant, where are you this evening?
Um, good evening. Um, so I've known I've been updating policies. Uh, throughout my time here, this one is going to be for a nominal fee on the volunteer firefighters. So on page one sixty-four, your package, you'll see that proposed policy, if there's any questions. This is just gonna be a nominal fee paid to volunteer.
Is it an increase or a decrease? I don't know what we're paying them for.
So. The structure is different. Right now they're getting paid for pipe control and for fall ball. This is repreaching it, so it'll be ship-based. So they're gonna be paid for ship and the ships are gonna be in four hours. So they can sign up for a eight-hour ship. Just four more, four hundred.
Double check all the changes that we're making and if there's no. Issues with.
Yes, and here.
We looked through all the further impact issues and all that.
If they're over six hundred.
Any other questions?
I'm moved to approve the patient's volunteer board department national fee distribution policy.
A motion by Jonathan to approve the revisions to volunteer firefighters' nominal D distribution policy seconded by Shelley, is there any discussion? All those favor? Item number nine, discuss the civil and possible action on approving and agreeing to city of Joshua, Johnson County for elected services. And authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents, Miss Hopeway.
Yes, sir, um, once I found out there's a possible November election, I reached out to the county to possibly contract with them. Uh, city secretary's office does not have the staff or equipment for a November election. When, in May, we're one percent. In November, we have to follow the counties, which gives us five. Um, so there's, whether by a lot of equipment or a contract, which would be much easier. Um, when I talked to them, they asked if we are planning on. Calling a November election, if we could possibly approve this contract during this meeting, so they can go ahead and get everything started. With this contract, um, keep in mind, there is a state election that they will be handling. With that, early voting, um, for the state is gonna be in Cleveland for all of Joshua residents. So our early voting main poll will be in Cleveland. Now, we do have the option of having a local, but it's only for Joshua. Bond election, it would not be for the state election, so either way, the citizens would have to go to two different locations if we did that. Another thing, um, the school asked if we did have our, an early voting location here, if we want to share the location. And so I have all these options here. If we did not have an early voting, um, here, the cost would be around sixteen thousand for the election. If we have an early vote in here, um, it'd be around twenty-one thousand. But again, the citizens still have to go to Cleveland to vote in the state election.
Here. The school.
We'll be sharing locations, just like we do in May. We'll still have our own judges, our own clerks, our own ballots.
We. Approve this tonight and then next month we decide not to call that election. Is this contract capital?
There is a penalty and I believe it's three hundred dollars here.
If we're wanting to do our early voting.
I'm sorry, the penalty is seventy-five dollars, um, not three hundred, and yes, we, because we'll have to put it in this contract.
Encourage. In this long election, even though it's an additional cost. Personally, I think that we have a better outcome if we had a little. Early voting location. Do you see? If you, you know, historically, you look at the total number of people that voted in Joshua early versus on election day. Is there significant higher turnover? I, I know that those are usually here, but see them.
Doing early voting, it's usually, I believe, around one twenty-five to one fifty. Um, and that's with our May election, where we're doing our own election, um, and that's the only thing that's on the ballot. With them having to go to Cleveland. I'm not sure how that would work, but keep in mind, we did, a lot of times we have a lot of mail-in ballots. One year I only had four, next year I had a hundred and fifty, and so that, it would all still go and be processed together.
So they're only doing early voting at the elections office in Cleveland, they're not going to do it at some four ounce suburban or any place.
And I've been asked if they could have one at our location, and they said no.
With having the, the school is. I, I expect the interaction with the school is going to vary negatively. And if we are in the same place to vote in those.
Well, we have plenty, uh, we get to choose the location for early voting. We've got several options we can use. Not, not sharing with the school. They would like, well, they would like to know with this contract, right, correct. There's three options. One, not have an early voting location here, just, just a main one in Cleveland. Um, two. Right. Then two, have an early voting location, a place of our choice alone, not sharing with the school. And then have an early vote in, in Joshua, sharing with the school. The location. Sixteen, little or sixteen thousand. Uh, twenty-one thousand. There's not much, there's a little bit of difference, but I wouldn't say two hundred dollars.
We make it easy for our citizens to vote. Well, having it in place. Anyway, both the state. But if we don't offer.
Now, with, with an early vote in location here, you're given more options. I mean, they can come here and just vote for this one, or they can go there and vote for both. They have an option to go to different places.
If, if we have the early voting location here, I can still go to Cleveland and vote for early for this.
Yes, ma'am, we'll have two locations for early voting.
I move that we have early voting ban loan here.
And not.
No, sure.
Cool. Okay, go ahead and. Right.
One second.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I have a motion by Johnny. To approve the agreement with the City of Joshua and Johnson County for election services. And authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Uh, with a stand-alone. Early voting. Uh, station. With, within the city. But that sound good? Okay, uh, Johnny moved and Shelley seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, item number ten, discuss considering possible action on board appointments.
Mayor, City Council, we have one vacancy on type B board. Ms. Kim Henderson, um, has applied to serve on that position. She is not here because she had previous engagement of being out of town. And she apologized for that. Uh, but she's very interested in being appointed.
Her children called her off to California for a surprise vacation.
I bet people are kicking it.
Waiting on a train lasts about solid several hours late.
Wrong. Okay.
She would be a great, I think she was on that board at one time, years ago.
She was a great addition. That, that is type D correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any discussion they wanna? Any other barbs they want to throw? I think it would be a better position to be on. Yes. She, she loves the city. Thanks very highly, so. So. That being said, do I have a motion? Okay, so I have a motion to approve Kim Henderson to the type B board. Seconded by. Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, if I have any questions on any of the staff reports? No? Uh. We had a pretty. Bad accident. Here, not too long ago, didn't we, chief? Um. There was one of those. Uh, was that, uh? Just, did they survive all the athletes, I'm sorry. It's, well, they weren't. God, I'm seeing here. You're going to be, you, you have not heard any. Okay. I've, I've heard that, uh, accommodations should go onto our. Uh, police department. Fire department, everybody from Palay and scene, and they did a very good job getting it there. That, that's always. Bad here, but good here. Where's the services are doing, supposed to be good, so thank you very much, man. Anybody else have anything?
Um. I gotta add, how bad is the damage present? There were several. Look, really. Burning. Your. Where started on? Burn, the block. If we're out there. With the bug. Out, yeah. Over. Asshole. So what we're saying, burning on this moment. With the materials, your interior structures. Man. Structures. Departments responded. Uh, sales, of course, uh. E S D in three. Labor. Yeah, human. Doing know if there was any failures. The. And on to the fire extinguisher, uh, where, is there any, that unit is in the building? Option. A little later. So that's. Praying these leaks. Cylinder. We're still investigating. That was the next question. Okay.
How was their fireplace? Sorry, how was the water flow pressure?
Okay. Uh, and just again, that very. Things are so fire up in my neighborhood. You know, I saw Cleveland Fire Department. E S D, fire department. I think there'd be more than actually, I think it was smashed, so. Up into the. Old Mount Valley. To see everybody showing up with that, it's. Pretty. Pretty great scene on shoulders. That would be a good setup. All right. So. It is now eight twenty-eight, at this time, we're going to recess into executive session. Uh, City Council, City of Joshua will recess into executive session. On the meeting for certain provisions of chapter five-five, so chapter D, the government code, to discuss the following. Uh, in accordance with that schedule, section five-five-one point oh-seven-six, incorporate guard security audits. And, uh, to have litigation. I think that we have, if you haven't agreed that. Yeah, I've got.
It should be behind your agenda.
Emergency attendant to the, the. Agenda, um. We're moving into executive session, also, we're five-five-one point seven, called thanks to the city attorney, someone, city attorney, and to do litigation with. Report litigation. Okay, you have ten twenty, I'm on back order. If I have any future agenda items they want to talk about? Hearing them, we are adjourned ten twenty-eight.